Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Are council members ready to proceed? All right, very good. This meeting of your Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order. We begin now with the invocation. We give the floor to Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Brother President McGinnis. We are so glad to be here yet on another Tuesday to do in the work of the city. And it's so good to see our normal person here, Pastor Kathy Desrow, who normally prays for her. And since she has blessed us with her presence today, we're going to ask her to do our invocation this evening.
I would ask that you bow your heads tonight. I don't always do that, but there are times when we need to be reverent when we speak to God. Tonight, Lord, I'm asking less hate, more love. The hate isn't working, and we've forgotten how to love. So, Lord, my prayer tonight is that you would teach Pontiac how to love again, how to remember that each one was carved by you in the beginning, and that we can disagree without hating. We thank you for each member of the council. We ask that you meet each of their needs, because nobody knows what their needs are, as nobody knows what our needs are. But you do, and we praise you, and we thank you, and we ask these things in the name of our Savior. Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have a moment of silence as a community to remember those that we've said goodbye to in recent weeks. I'll read the names of those who have recently passed away to our knowledge from the Pontiac community. Ariana Alaman Viet, Jesse Armstrong, Frank Baker, Mark Barnes, David Beckley, Charles Bender, Jordan Bamer, Brenda Bolden, Jerome Bradford Jr., Matthew Cannon, Iris Caratini, Kayla Carr, Kevin Carroll, Desiree Childs, Nettie Clay, Gwendolyn Davis, Kenneth Davis Sr., Vertia Davis, Reginald Dixon, Sylvia Douglas, Dick Euler, David Fallshear, Frank Flores, Linda Franks, Gwen Grady, Mary Graves, DeKaya Green, Dallas Hall, William Harker, DeAndre Harris, Janice Herring, Eva Hofer, Kenneth Jackson, Rick Jamiefield, Robert Lee II, Charles Lindenberg, Jeffrey McCray, Dwayne McFarland, Helen Milton, William Motzny, Rashun Officer, Leona Pace Jones, Martha Palmer, Joseph Peters Sr., Dale Potter, Christopher Purdy, Carol Reharb Nichols, Louis Rogers, Ramon Santos, Jeffrey Smith, Carla Snell, Caronda Taylor, Marjorie Thompson Seder, Quavetis Thompson, Claudell Turner Sr., Kyrie Wallace, Jasmine Watson, Joseph S. Williams, and Sequence Wright. Please join us as a community as we remember their names with a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Roll call Clerk Doyle of the council members.
Carrington. Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum. Quorum being established, is there a motion to excuse Councilman Carrington for personal reasons?
Some move.
Board.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call on adoption of the motion to excuse Council pro temp Carrington for personal reasons. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, and pro temp Carrington is excused. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda? It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. The motion is now before us. Any amendments, any discussion, clarifications? Councilman Rutherford.
Point of information, we have an item that's a discussion item that I was asked by the public about the national news coverage. Is there a reason why that's on there?
Just to celebrate and make sure that the community knew about it.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Any further discussion, amendments? All right. With that, speakers list exhausted, roll call on adoption of the agenda. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda is approved. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Some move.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Rutherford. This evening's consent agenda has the November 2nd, 2023 city council meeting minutes, including the closed session minutes. Roll call on adoption of the consent agenda. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Now, we're at recognition of elected officials. If there's any current elected officials serving the community that wish to have the floor, I see that we have multiple members of the Pontiac Charter Revision Commission if they'd like to say hey. And as a point of privilege, if Charter Revision Commissioner Williams would also like to acknowledge or speak to that discussion item, and you don't have to stick around for it, but we really want to celebrate that your organization was able to generate positive national news coverage for the city of Pontiac.
Bless you, President McGinnis. I'm glad that you serve District 7, the best district in the world. So, but seriously, on the Charter Commission issue, we have really been having some productive meetings recently. We have about a month left in order to get it done, and we would love to hear from the council people along with the mayor's office. And I know you've had conversation with individual charter commissioners, but we would love for you to take a Thursday and actually come to the meeting, because we're getting into the nuts and bolts of what would be happening in the future. We need the public to be involved. And the worst-case scenario is for us to update the charter, and then there's one sticking point that you can't live with, and now you're poo-pooing it to the community where we can celebrate this as a community. The charter started four months before I was born, and so that's a long time. So, we need to make sure that we're updating it and bringing it into 2023 and beyond, and we would love your help. One of the sections we're on right now is putting the assessor's office back in the charter. And you know, our assessor is at Oakland County right now, so I would love to hear feedback on what would actually happen or what you think would be a viable option as going forward. So, it's regular nuts and bolts things like that that people who are outside of city government may not know about. And so, I want to make sure that you are invited. And the general public, we definitely want to hear from you, because it's the People's Charter and the Constitution of the city of Pontiac. Chairperson Ramsey has been doing a great job of keeping us on task by hook or by crook. And so, our meetings are entertaining, to say the least. But I think we need to see audience members. And last time, we didn't have any public comment. So, if you think or see something that happens here at this dais on a Tuesday night that you think could be rectified in the future, the Charter Commission meeting is the place for you to actually get there to talk about those issues and really think about what we need for the next 150 years or so of Pontiac. So, now I'm taking off my Charter Commission hat.
I'll just ask, so when is the next meeting or meetings?
When is the next meeting? This Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. We just had a meeting on Saturday, so please forgive me. We have a meeting this Thursday in city council chambers at 6:00 PM. The meetings usually run about two hours, but whatever. Okay, three hours. I hope for two, but it usually runs three hours. So, please come out. We're getting really through the bulk of the charter right now. And so, if you want to make a comment, please be here. That's 47450 Woodward Avenue, second floor, through the double doors. And then the next one is on the 16th. So, before you eat your turkey, come to a Charter Commission meeting. All right, that's my PSA for Charter Commission. I'm taking off that hat as an elected official. And so, we had some huge news happen for the city of Pontiac and Oakland County and the state of Michigan altogether. So, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for allowing us to use the Bowen Center. For those people who don't know, PBS NewsHour did about a 15-minute story on the work of the Pontiac Warrant Clinic. They had been doing these in the South, but Pontiac, which is the center of the universe, as Hubert Price would say, was the first place north of the Mason-Dixon line that was able to do a warrant clinic. Our first warrant clinic, Councilman Goodman, was a part of the team, and we serviced about 125 people. This last warrant clinic, over 250 people got serviced, and they're still getting serviced today. Our phenomenal Chief Judge, Judge Walker, has been leading in transformational justice along with Judge Gross and Judge Bowie. They actually had what was called court in the community. So, they took the Bowen Senior Center. And let me just say this, the staff at the Bowen Center is absolutely phenomenal. If y'all haven't put a raise in the budget, put a raise in the budget for them, because they just went over and above to make us not only feel welcome, but everybody who came through the door really feel welcome with that facility. So, it's good to have a gym in Pontiac and great people staffing and working that. But anyway, they actually had court in the community, and so nobody would be arrested. So, if you had a warrant for traffic or a nonviolent misdemeanor, you were able to come to the Bowen Senior Center, actually see a judge dressed in street clothes, get a walking taco, get some childcare, and some other things. And so, PBS picked up on that story, because this is how we want court to be in the community in the future. And so, this is going to be a pilot or a model for the rest of the nation. So, if you haven't seen that story, please look on the PBS NewsHour. You can go to our Oakland Forward Facebook page. There's a lot of Pontiac residents that are there. I do want to thank the national partners, which were Black Voters Matter, along with Gray, which is Growing Real Alternatives everywhere. And so, they do this in Louisiana, Texas, and other places. And so, now I have people that call my phone on a regular basis and say, Kermit, I got a warrant. I can just send their contact information to a judge, and they'll be able to look it up and take care of those people. So, this is ongoing. We'll probably do another two warrant clinics next year. But they've been doing it now. They just had one in Flint, and then they had one in Detroit where 1,500 people showed up within an hour. And so, Pontiac was able to be the first place for this to get done. And so, I want to commend our city for opening up. And this was where all the levels of government worked together. You had the judicial system working together. You had the illustrious city giving us the space in order for this to happen. You had the nonprofit and the community groups like MCBCP and Black U Votes along with our own Wall Street all coming together. And quite a few of the council people came by. Councilwoman Rutherford was there and some others. And Pastor Parker was at the first one. I believe I saw Pastor James there. But we've had so much phenomenal opportunity, and James McQueen kept me together, because we actually had a bounce house and a DJ at the event. So, this was court like never before. It happened right here in Pontiac, and it was because not only the government, but the people were willing to open the doors all together and really have a seamless transition. The national funder said to us that we could have shot the documentary anywhere, but because Pontiac was the best warrant clinic that they had had, they wanted to come back to our city to do it. So, I want everybody to give themselves a hand clap, because this is a victory for the city. And when you start seeing warrant clinics all throughout communities all over the world, know that Pontiac was an instrumental piece in making that happen. So, thank y'all for this time. I'm going to go and take a shower now, because we've been outside at the election polls in Southfield and Oak Park in Ferndale all day today. So, as my mother would say, I smell like outside. So, I'm going to go and get out of here. But thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for allowing this time.
Thank you, and happy recent birthday, Mr. Williams. All right. Any other recognition of elected officials?
Counsel, Mayor, Mr. Doyle. Beatrice Wright, I'm an elected official. I am a Democratic office delegate representative. I wanted to get up and just say, you know, I want to encourage young people to vote. I want to encourage old people to encourage young people to vote. I want you to express to them how important their vote is. One vote, difference between medical marijuana and no medical marijuana. One vote. But one voting block, i.e. people over 65, that's a voting block. You can depend on us to vote, because we know what is at stake when we don't vote. And so, I want to encourage people to vote, and I want to encourage people to understand that their vote counts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other elected official address? Hearing none further. We now move to agenda address. Councilman Rutherford, who's the... Someone playing a flute up in here? Oh, it's a phone ringer, not a surreptitious recorder being played.
The first speaker will be Beatrice White. What item are you speaking on, ma'am?
I'm speaking on... Let me get my notes. I'm speaking on item number two, and then also item number... Item number six. Item number two is an encouragement. It's an encouragement for people of color to get involved in medical marijuana and marijuana as it exists in Pontiac, Michigan. I want you to understand that there are many, many aspects of the law. Did you know that there is an aspect of the law that inspects the marijuana? I'm of the opinion that it's now time to get on board for how it can help our community, how can it help your family, how can it help you? And so, I want individuals to understand that there's so many jobs attached to the marijuana industry. And never forget it, truck drivers, security individuals, many, many jobs. Now, as it relates to number six. Number six says, "Resolution to Approve the Specialty Designated Merchant and Class C Bistro Licensing As Requested By The Petitioner Kegger Burger 7 North Saginaw Suite A." I wish the best for Kegger Burger, but I don't know what a specialty designated merchant is in city lingo, and I would like for somebody to explain that to me.
Thank you. Carlton Jones, what items are you going to be speaking about tonight?
Good evening, Mrs. Everybody. I was out last week out of town, but I did get a chance to watch the council meeting. Great thing about being on television. Item one and two, and I guess I want to do number two first. Number two, I think where you're dealing with the marijuana issue, and I think Ms. Wright was just speaking about it. If I'm not mistaken, if we're struggling sometime to get some parts of what we're trying to do, maybe we could just step next door, because I think Clerk Doyle did a great job in having community benefits into that medical marijuana. And I'm saying that, because we seem like we don't always know how to do what we need to do to help the citizens. But community benefit packages were a part of that, and I would recommend that we look at how we can make sure that they're done up front. They... If you do them up front, you don't have to worry about the tail end, the community being left out. So, that's what I want to share about that. Item number one, dealing with CM at risk. I was glad to hear Councilwoman James speak up last week. Now, I've got extensive background in construction, and construction management at risk, it might sound like a good deal, and it could be a good method for us to use. But I think she was right on when she was pointing out how much control you give out to buy that risk. So, we need to understand that there are several different construction methods. I would say we want to consider design bill as another alternative. But I will say that construction manager at risk, as she was hitting that, it gives up a whole lot until you can determine what is the guaranteed maximum price. And that's what they're trying to do, is guarantee a maximum price. So, let's just do our homework to make sure we do the best thing. We're talking about construction and how we can alleviate the risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Deidre Waterman, what items will you be speaking to this evening?
If you have the sheet, I have it written on there.
I can't read your handwriting, so if you could clarify again, I didn't know. I didn't know I made a joke.
Well, I'm going to start with... Hold on, why don't we start with three and five?
Thank you.
Three and four, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, I see here three and four, I believe, is a commendation recognizing number 11 coming up as Veterans Day. And this, of course, is an important celebration and commemoration of our veterans of all the service industries who have defended the freedoms of all of us as we have our voting day today in many communities. So, I would also like to let people know about another event to commemorate veterans, and that is a conference going on at the Michigan Veterans Foundation this November 9th, starting at 9:00 in the morning. It's called Soar Like an Eagle, and I will be there as part of a group that's going to be a sponsor for the Veterans Day, and we hope veterans will take advantage of this opportunity for the resources that will be provided and to get the commemoration for all the services that people have done who have served us so well in this community. I just periodically do bring up things that are not quite correct or need some other explanation that are on the agenda. And I know that on the agenda, you have the minutes, which said that you had the zoning ordinance map amendment, which was read twice. And it says here that in the minutes of what was to be signed as a result of your passing, that zoning map ordinance amendment, was that the foregoing amendment was to be signed after a public hearing, as required pursuant to the Michigan Act 110 of 2006. And I don't recall that you ever had a public hearing. So, if this was approved by you and signed as something that had been done in order for this to be passed, then that is... Needs to be corrected. In addition to the fact that in your consent agenda, it says, what you just approved, it says that you're approving the closed session minutes. There's no closed session minutes in the packet. It'd be unusual to do that. It's just unusual that you approved something that wasn't there.
Thank you. Pastor Kathy, which items will you be speaking to this evening?
Item one.
Thank you.
And as she's taking the podium, the question was invoked, closed session meeting minutes. There's a specific way in which the state of Michigan requires that to be done. We do, of course, have a copy of the closed session meeting minutes, but it's a closed confidential meeting. So, the state of Michigan requires those to be held for one year by the clerk's office. There's a specific process and protocol. But it would completely defeat the purpose of having a closed session where we were discussing somebody who was suing all of us, the people of Pontiac, in that closed session. The meeting minutes speak to that, the closed session meeting minutes. So, that's the nature of the closed session. It's the... That's the way it shakes out with the state of Michigan. Yes, sir.
If I could, Mr. President, just to answer the other question that was posed, the law requires that a public hearing be done by the Planning Commission, not by city council. And so, that would be reflected in Planning Commission meeting minutes, that a public hearing was in fact conducted.
Mr. Desrow.
I'm speaking to number one. When this appeared a couple of weeks ago, it seemed to be pretty controversial. And I have several friends who own construction companies. So, I'm not necessarily all in Michigan. Some are out of state, but I thought, this is obviously something that happens everywhere. How do they feel about it? And my best friend said, anytime something at risk appears, you're taking a risk. They wanted me to ask, is this not what the bond is for? Isn't that give us some kind of security? The surety bond. There are other ways to secure things than to bring in yet another person at another salary. Control is very difficult, if not impossible, in some situations, and they just didn't feel like it was a good deal for us.
Thank you. Chuck Johnson. Darlene Clark, which issue will you be speaking to this evening?
She passes.
Okay. Gloria Miller is not present. That is all for agenda address.
All right, that concludes agenda address. We are now at number one on the agenda. Adoption of an ordinance to amend Article 6, Finance Division 2, Purchasing Section 2-256, specifications, contracts, and bid documents for construction contracts and purchases to add subsection D, authorizing the use of a construction manager at-risk delivery method for city construction projects. This was read for a first time last week. We had passed a resolution acknowledging that it was read and presented for a first time. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Some move.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford and seconded by Councilman Nicholson. So, the adoption of that ordinance, this second reading, is now before us. Mayor Grimald, I want to give the floor to you, but are you still waiting for council to arrive to be able to speak to that? Because if that's the case, and you wanted them to make a specific presentation, we could always set it on the table until they arrive.
Well, he was estimated to arrive at 6:30. It's 6:31. I see that we do have our purchasing manager here, but it looks... I see that we do have our purchasing manager here, but it looks like the attorney has not yet arrived, so perhaps we should, if it's council's pleasure, postpone this until the very next agenda item.
Okay, without objection, could I have a motion to table? All right, it's been moved to table by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, meaning we'll just set it aside, pick it up off the table when it's time to roll. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on the motion to table for a brief moment. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
Okay, that is placed on the table. When it's time to pick it up off the table, we'll all be here. All right, we're now at number two on the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the first reading of a zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Section 2.303, Section 2.551, Section 2.552, Section 2.553, Section 2.554, Section 2.555, Section 2.556, a lot of sections, Section 2.557, Section 2.559, and Section 3.1208 regarding marijuana and caregivers amendment? Is there such a motion for that first reading resolution?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Goodman. Again, this is a first reading. It's been at the planning commission previously. They had a public hearing there. They made a recommendation. It's now here for the first of at least two readings, and so that way it's introduced to the council and the community what is proposed for ordinance amendments. So give the floor to the mayor and administration to provide context.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. There are a few components to this proposal, and I'll allow our planning manager, Mark Yandrick, to get into those different components as they've been recommended by the planning commission on a three-to-one vote. I would just note that in terms of any additional restrictions for, say, the color green on marijuana dispensaries, this is certainly the time to do that because once dispensaries or retailers get up and operating, I presume that under the law they will be grandfathered, and it will be a lot harder to put those restrictions in place. So I would just say that, to the extent that council would like to see some of those aesthetic controls in place, this is the time to do it because after they actually open, it'll be much more difficult legally to put those controls in place. And with that, I'll turn it over to our planning manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So I have a very brief presentation compared to the marijuana ordinance that was passed in April. This is very short, but I want to just highlight what, and really identify what is being proposed. So as mentioned in the motion, this is a citywide, city-initiated zoning text amendment. It modifies the marijuana amendments that were passed the first week of April of this year, and those are the following sections. This is the process that planning commission is going through. There was a public hearing last week. This is a first reading, and this requires two readings. The second one at this time is planned for next week. Just some background, city council adopted ordinances 2406 and 2407 to allow and regulate adult-use marijuana in the city. This ordinance also included some language for caregivers. A referendum petition was filed, and there was a referendum expected at today's election, but that referendum has been withdrawn, so there's no vote today. And city council approved the municipal ordinance code amendments on October 10th of this year, but that primarily changed the scoring for the licensing program and has no direct relation to the ordinances this evening. So those are completely separate. So there are three proposals here. Number one is to prohibit green of signage and the facade of adult-use marijuana businesses. This aligns with the existing ordinance that already bans imagery and words that are related to a federally-recognized drug such as marijuana. So we already have prohibitions when it comes to imaging and certain language that, because it is a federally-recognized drug, we are allowed to prohibit for the safety and well-being of our community. Green is an extension of the signage and protects the healthiness and aesthetics of a corridor. If a potential entrepreneur wanted to use green to expand the sign, to expand on a facade, it actually could make the imaging and marketing a lot more expansive, and we're trying to use this to attach to some of those, again, items that are related to drug paraphernalia that we would try to prohibit. So that is what is being, that is the number one proposal. Number two, we did pass something earlier this year that restricted caregivers to certain industrial zoning districts, but in a further review, some industrial districts have much larger buildings. They might be 10, 15, 20,000 square feet. And really, in evaluating what a caregiver is, which is the ability for someone to grow up to, for six patients, including themselves, up to 72 plants, we thought that, you know, having a 10,000-square-foot building may be a little bit of a mismatch, and we wanted to make sure the caregivers were in an appropriate-size building, and so we clearly differentiate between a caregiver and a marijuana grow operation, which is a different land use that city council has adopted earlier this year. The caregivers do not need to go through the scoring system through our business licensing program, but a marijuana grow operation would need to do so. And lastly, there are two slides. I just wanted to bring up cleanup language. This is from Section 2.303. This just cleans up what city council adopted. I believe when some of the numbers for Table Two, for how many adult-use marijuana businesses were being modified between the overlay districts, this needed to be changed and to reflect that. So this would match what city council approved earlier this year. Again, we're just doing a cleanup as we just noticed an error within the code. And lastly, as part of the planning commission public hearing, we did have a planning commissioner bring this up. While this language kind of originated from medical marijuana, which prohibits a medical marijuana facility within 250 feet of a residential facility, there is not a prohibition within the adult use. And there is a reference within Section 3.1208 for having a residential dwelling unit. However, this, there's no other restriction within the marijuana ordinance, so staff is requesting for this to be struck from the ordinance as part of this amendment. So with that, planning commission recommended approval of these zoning text amendments. It was a three-to-one vote with the following one condition of approval during a public hearing on November 1st, 2023, and that condition was in Article 3.1208, Section B. The words "residential dwelling unit" shall be removed because it does not relate, it does not relate to a regulation in the ordinance. So that is my presentation. I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have, and we have Chuck Murphy from the Clark Hill Firm, who maybe can entertain any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this presentation. Again, it's the first reading, so with an affirmative vote tonight, we're just acknowledging it's been read for a first time. It will come back before us for at least another time, but debate on the matter now? Initial questions or deliberation? Council members? Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Yandrick. Good afternoon, or good evening rather. In regards to caregiver spots, are they still held to the same distance from playgrounds, churches, and things?
That is correct. That is not being modified with this ordinance, correct.
So they should be a certain distance from churches, playgrounds, schools, as the medical marijuana adhere?
Absolutely. So as part, as part of that, we passed this ordinance in April, so anything going forward from April would need to follow that distance buffering. Prior to that, we did not have regulations on caregivers, and it defaulted to the state ordinance. Thank you.
And to clarify, did the state ordinance have buffer requirements, or they were just not as stringent?
I would like to yield that to Attorney Murphy, please.
But it's helpful context because this is probably the reason why we're taking this action, because we didn't want it to be this loophole where caregivers were using the spirit of the law but not really truly following what the intent was, which was to provide for residents to provide for themselves and those they were caring for versus it being an end-runway to do it commercially. Mr. Murphy?
So the Medical Marijuana Act of 2008 did not have spacing requirements. There were other criminal statutes in Michigan that regulated the distance between schools, for example, and somebody possessing marijuana nearby. And then there was litigation over the 2008 statute, which, when the Supreme Court decided that DeRuder case, they basically reaffirmed the right of a municipality to enact zoning regulations and police power regulations over medical marijuana caregivers and patients, and that the MMMA, the 2008 statute, didn't prohibit that. So the city has the right to enforce its zoning regulations so long as they don't totally prohibit caregivers from performing their caregiver services in the city.
Thank you. Councilman Nicholson?
Looking at the symmetry between this and the medical ordinance, are we still providing the exception for downtown when we're talking about?
I believe it does.
With this ordinance, a caregiver would not be able to operate downtown.
There's no address.
Correct. Yep.
Councilwoman James?
Yeah, I'm a little confused as to what is different about what you're proposing here in this overview for the caregiver. I mean, we approved an ordinance that allows for caregiving. What are you proposing here that's different than what's in the ordinance?
So limiting the square footage of their facility to 2,000 square feet. Previously, you could have a 10,000 or 20,000-square-foot industrial building that would have multiple caregivers in it with far more than the 72 plants. So this concept is to reduce it down to what it was originally intended to be. The caregiver plus five patients, limited to 72 plants. They're supposed to have a separate room that's locked for every 12 plants.
Okay. And the prohibiting green, what was the difference there in what we had?
The prior zoning ordinance did not prohibit the color green.
Yeah, I thought it did.
It said imagery and other elements, but it did not invoke green. And you've assessed that based on some of the other municipalities, it just basically slathered in green of various different hues to convey or communicate that it's a marijuana establishment. So you thought that it was, it would fill that, close that gap?
That's correct. I mean, if you go down Eight Mile Road, there's a ton of green signs every couple blocks for dispensaries.
I thought ours did, but I guess, I thought it did specify that it prohibited green. Okay.
Further discussion on this first reading? Hearing no further discussion. Speaker's list is exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution approving the first reading. Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Same.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Five yeas, one extension.
All right, that motion carries. The resolution to approve the first reading has been adopted, and we will see that at most likely the next meeting, but at a future city council meeting. Is there a motion to pull from the table what happened? Number one, adoption of an ordinance to amend Article Six?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford and seconded by Councilman Nicholson that we pull from the table that ordinance amendment. Roll call, Clerk Doyle, on approving the motion to pull it from the table. Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
That motion carries. We're revisiting now item number one. So this was read for a first time at last week's city council meeting. We've now, we've had a move and a second, so we're actively considering the ordinance to amend Article Six. So Mayor Grimal, if you'd like to give some more information about the rationale, and this is prompted, but not only for the initiative that the city is taking on behalf of the residents of Pontiac for the construction of a new youth recreation center. And we want to ensure that an aggressive timetable can be pursued. The intention is to be able to open the youth recreation center in 2025. That's what city council is eager to see, and we look forward to taking all the steps necessary to put the building blocks in place, and this is one of those building blocks to meet that aggressive timeline. We give the floor now to Mayor Grimal for background and rationale.
Yeah, that's a great summary, and before we have the purchasing manager and the city's attorney come to the podium, I did just want to reflect on a couple of the comments we heard this evening. This would not involve the city hiring an additional construction manager. The vast majority of construction projects already have a private construction manager or general contractor involved in that project. This is simply about engaging in a contract that allocates the risk of cost overruns or of projects taking longer than they should on that construction manager that's already working on the project so that the city's not bearing that risk, the construction manager is bearing that risk. In addition, the goal here with the youth recreation project at least is in fact to have a variant of a design-build approach where the designer, the architect, and the contractor are working together really from essentially day one, and so that's always been the aspiration here. But in consulting with attorneys, they thought that it would make sense to add this component whereby the construction manager or the general contractor bears the risk of cost overruns or the project taking too long. So this is not really, instead of a design-build approach, this is a variant of a design-build approach to make sure that the contractor really bears that risk. And with that, I'd invite our purchasing manager and/or our city attorney who's been working on this to come to the podium and please, and just speak a little bit to why this recommendation was made and what you see as the benefits of this approach, and then certainly take any questions the city council may have.
We'll want to have you turn the microphone on and set the bottom right of the base of the black device.
Got it. Hi, Jeff Gallant from Clark Hill. I'm in our construction law practice group. I was probably the one that initiated the suggested change of going from an integrated design or design-build pure project to a construction manager at-risk type project. That's really the way most of my clients, I represent a lot of owners, are going. It provides the benefit of having the construction manager involved very early in the process of design pre-construction, but also provides the benefit and safeguards that a general contractor, construction manager provides. It's really giving you the best of both worlds. Design-build can be really tricky. That is not really for most owners, in my mind. It can provide a lot of pitfalls. You don't know necessarily if you are getting what you thought you were getting through a design-build process. So construction manager at risk involves the construction manager pre-construction. They're assisting in the, not necessarily in the design, but in the value engineering part of the process. It allows them to start construction in various aspects of the project before the full-blown plans are prepared, and because we're using ARPA funds and those have to be obligated by the end of 2024, that'll provide us a head start such as providing grading, site work, and things like that that can be started once the general building envelope or area is known, and it does provide it. The safeguards and the construction manager can be bidding out the work through hand-in-hand with the purchasing manager, in this case, purchasing agent for the city, who will see the bids, will verify the bids, will be able to bless the bids, and the construction manager would then actually enter into the contract with the subcontractors, but it would all be through open book, and the city would see everything, every step of the way.
Thank you. And it was shared last week that with American Rescue Plan federal funding that the city is receiving, that there are requirements that interface with this aspect. Are you familiar with that, or are you able to shed any light on that?
Yes. So ARPA requires that projects be competitively bid. So to do that, we are meeting that by, and professionals don't have to be. So you can, your architects or construction managers, to the extent they're not self-performing work, they can do so as a professional service, yet you meet the competitive bidding requirements of the trade work by bidding it out. So you get, you're able to comply with ARPA by doing this process. I think it would be really tricky to do a design-build under ARPA and competitively bidding it because you really wouldn't have enough information early on in the process to get competitive. to get competitive bids from a design builder. You'd be asking a design builder to basically give you millions of dollars of a price, a contract price without really knowing the scope. So, this provides you to comply with the ARPA competitive bidding requirements.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion before us? All right, this is the second reading. So, it ultimately would be, yes, Councilman James, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I have some comments. I do appreciate the responses that I got through email, the questions that I raised in terms of, because I think basically the process itself is sound. It makes sense for us because we really, this is one of our highest priorities. We definitely want to see our community centers stay on track. You know, we, we need to see it get built. We need to see it stay on track. And this is a good tool to be able to use. The concern that I had, though, was that the city, does the city have the appropriate expertise to manage? Because if a construction manager who will have responsibility for any overages, you can be sure that that individual is going to be right on, you know, getting that job done. And he is going to be under pressure, he or she will be under tremendous pressure to bring that project in on, on budget and on time. And that's going to put, you know, pressures on them to do things and to, you know, just to do what that person needs to do. And my concern is, does the city have the appropriate expertise here at the city to be able to navigate all the things that that, that's going to come up? So, that, there will be things coming up. And the, I did get the responses that we do have our, our manager, or the DPW Deputy Director, Mr. Mueller, does have construction experience. Alicia Martin has worked with a construction manager at-risk process before. And also Shannon Filarecki, our, our city engineer, also has experience with these kinds of, of programs. So, I appreciate getting that feedback from the administration. There's one other concern that I have. It's not strong enough. I still support it, and I plan to vote yes. But I want to express this concern is that you're looking at the team that the city's put together and administration has put together. It's a sound team. They have the experience. But I'm concerned about the turnover rate at the city is unacceptable, and it can, I think, have impact upon this kind of, it's very sensitive. You have to get, have those right people on the job, and those people have to be able to, have to remain on that job. So, that does concern me. It doesn't concern me to the point where I would say that this is not something that we should do. I still support it and plan to approve it. But I want to say that we have a vulnerability here in that we need to be able to do a better job at retaining employees in the city, and, and it's just something that we're going to have to work on. But I think to acknowledge the fact that we need to work on it. It needs to be done.
Very well said. Do you want to respond to that before I call the next speaker?
Yeah, just so I can clarify.
Okay.
So, let me just say this. I hear what you're saying. Construction manager at-risk projects generally have less claims from construction managers than a hard, than a traditional, design-everything, bid it out competitively, because there's actually more pressure, because they're all bidding against each other to get the job for the lowest price. And, and because they're not involved in the design, they're not knowing all the ins and outs and all the, of the design itself. So, if anything, what, this is why I recommend a lot of owners to go to construction manager at-risk, because there's usually less claims. And, and from a construction standpoint, it's really identical. The, the construction manager, when, when the project starts, the construction starts, the contractor, whether it's a general contractor or a construction manager, from the owner's perspective, is really no different. It's still their show. It's still their project. They still need to report to the owner. But I 100% agree with you. If, whether there's turnover at the construction manager, which I like to put in my contracts, we want to know who the key personnel is. They got to get our permission before they change. Same thing applies for owners. You want to make sure the owner doesn't have turnover because the, I also do, so half my work is probably handling contract reviews and the other half is disputes. Almost invariably on the disputes is because either the owner has a lot of turnover or the construction manager has a lot of turnover. And that's what you want to avoid.
Yeah.
Because you've said something in the past, and now we're changing it. So, it's a very good, good point.
Well...
On follow-up, Councilman James.
Just want to say that, you know, I understand what you're saying, but my point is that the city needs to have people on staff, even though the burden of responsibility is going to be on that construction manager. We need to have people who are knowledgeable about that process. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and you know, you can't open, you can't go into that kind of a project and not have team members at the city that have experience working in that process, because that's, that's, that's a little different. That, and that's a very, you know, it's a big project. So, I, I'm, I'm very happy that as a city, we have expertise here that have experience in working with those kinds of projects. I think that's going to help that, the project to be successful, because we all want it to be successful.
Very, very well, and thank you for raising that in terms of the, the value of having and stability of employment and, and departmental leadership in these key positions.
It's a vulnerability, and so, we need to recognize it, not to point fingers and not to, you know, bash people, but we need to be able to talk about our vulnerabilities and, and, and plan for them.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford?
So, my question is going to be a little different. This is two-part. It's going to be to the administration. Are we using, when we go into this agreement, other avenues for people to bid other than BidNet? Because there's a habit that because we strictly use certain BidNet, people, the, the, the web doesn't go out, out as far. And two, what is going to be the ratio for local people to be a part of this? And are we going to teach them how to get on these regular, if we're using different sites? Are we going to teach them how to get on those sites? Because what will happen is, and it always does, is that they will say, an individual will say, "Well, I didn't know because I only saw it on BidNet." And then, there will be a back, it will be a backlash because they'll say, "Well, that's all we had it on." So, then you'll get African-American companies who didn't know nothing about it, Hispanic-American companies that didn't know nothing about it, Asian-American companies that did not know nothing about it. So, my question for the first one is, are we using more than BidNet? If we are, name them publicly. Now, two, how are we ensuring that it spreads a bigger webcast to getting the best and the brightest, and not just those who will take pennies on the dollar? So, I yield to first you, and then I'll yield it to the mayor.
Thank you for your question, Councilwoman Rutherford. So, yes, we will be using a solicitation solution to post the solicitation documents to the public. We also post the solicitation document to the city's purchasing web pages, we've always done. So, that can actually be accessed for free. There's no cost to access it from the city's purchasing webpage. We also are in the process of creating a welcome center in the purchasing office. We've already set up a kiosk. When you first walk in, you can see the kiosk where we can assist small business owners with accessing those solicitations. And we're also printing the documents so that if they don't have access to a computer, they can go into the office and just pull one of the solicitation documents, so they won't have to worry about, again, the challenge of accessing it via the internet.
Mayor Brown?
Yeah, so, a couple of things. First of all, thank you for the question, because it's a really important question and important point. When it comes to any bidding process, any opportunity to, that's done in a competitive process, so, which means over a certain threshold, all of those bids, all of those solicitation for bids must be posted to the city's website. So, yes, we use BidNet because there are a lot of folks who, a lot of vendors, a lot of contractors who use BidNet. But we must, at a minimum, use the city's website. So, anybody who's local, who isn't on BidNet, should routinely monitor the city's contracting website, because it's required, and I, I believe it's required by city ordinance, it may be required by the city charter of it, that we post all competitive solicitations for bids or all solicitations for competitive bids on the city's website. So, that should always be a routine, regular stop for any local vendors who are interested in doing business with the city. So, that's, that's number one. BidNet is in addition to that, not instead of that. In terms of some of the other questions about how are we going to make sure that individual local contractors, minority contractors, and others have access to a project? I assume you're talking about the youth rec project?
Yes.
And that has yet to be determined, because this is not actually about any one specific project, this agenda item. This is just about adjusting the ordinance to give us flexibility to use this approach in the context of the youth rec bidding process or any other bidding process. So, this agenda item is not about, although it was prompted in part by one specific project, it is not in and of itself about any one specific project. So, we're happy to work with you to talk about, hey, what's the best way to make sure that more local contractors, more contractors of color have access and bid? I would note that one of our purchasing manager's first orders of business, when she came on board, to her great credit, was to do a local vendor, a local bidder orientation. And we did have, I think, considerable participation in that. We didn't have as much participation as maybe we would like, because I know that there are a number of local businesses that want to do business with the city who did not participate in that. But we, maybe it's time to start organizing another one of those so that we can get more participation in that. But I do just want to give purchasing manager Martin a lot of credit for doing that, because I don't think the city had done something like that in a long time before purchasing manager Martin came on board and organized that. But to your point, it might be helpful to do another one of those, to try to engage more local contractors, more local vendors, not just with any one project, but in terms of all of the purchasing opportunities that the city has.
Thank you. And then, my other thing is this. So, are we, do we have access to seeing if the, whoever we get these contracts out, what they've done in other cities? So, sometimes people come here because they feel like we can't check to see, I guess, the report card, have a finished project. So, like, a situation hypothetically, a person says, "Well, I want to build houses here," but the county has them on a do-not-use list. Are, do we, are you guys going to have access to that? Because you, I, I want, what I want, from the federal to the local to state, it should be checking everybody who actually do construction.
So, there is a couple of sources that we do check. We check the state of Michigan, Laura's site, to make sure that they're registered to do business within the state of Michigan. We also check SAM.gov, because if they're on the, what's the list called? It's like a you're-in-trouble list.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
That they keep and maintain the bar. Thank you. List that they do retain. So, we do check that to make sure that they're not on that list. So, we do do checks.
But the, on the federal level is what I'm concerned with.
That is federal. SAM.gov is federal.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I do want to add one more thing with, and I know we're talking about in general the addendum for just the approach, but I did want to mention that our team was talking about doing an outreach program throughout the CMA process to make sure we are reaching out to local businesses. That would be like a date that's set, and we would invite the, you know, smaller businesses in the community to come out to the site to learn more about the construction project, because that's something that we did discuss at our last meeting in terms of outreach.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Parker?
Thank you, brother president. I'm just curious. This is Michigan, and we're looking at a risk manager for our projects. I know Michigan weather. It changes. If you don't like it in the morning, it'll probably be snowing in the evening, and you'll enjoy it. And so, do we write into a, our contracts, a certain level of overage just for the changes that will occur in projects based on weather?
Like for inclement weather?
Yeah.
There's usually, I'm sorry, did you want to answer that?
No, no, please.
And Jeff can help me here with the inclement.
So, on a construction manager at-risk process, usually there's a contingency that we've set, preset early on in the process, 3%, 5%, whatever we've agreed is reasonable to address changes like that, such as force majeure type events, weather. And then, we address in the contract whether or not those changes are compensable, or, you know, dollar-wise, or just give them an extension of time. Yeah, there's two different ways to handle it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Speaker's list is exhausted. Roll call on adoption of an ordinance to amend Article Six, authorizing the use of a construction manager at-risk delivery method for city construction projects. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The ordinance is hereby amended. We're at number three. Resolution, oh, Councilman Rutherford, that vote just happened. Did you want to?
Yes.
She, if, if there's no objection, she'd like to register her yes vote, which makes it six-zero.
Sorry, my mind.
All right, very good. We're at number three. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution recognizing November 11th as Veterans Day in the city of Pontiac?
Some move.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Of course, it's a federal holiday, November 11th, and we just wanted to amplify and acknowledge that coming up here in our community. I want to acknowledge that there is a Veterans Day parade that's being organized by community members, including Councilman Emeritus Randolph Carter and State Representative Brenda Carter. That is happening on November 11th, and that starts here at City Hall and, and proceeding on Auburn and ending at Auburn and South Jesse at Uncle Jerry's Barbecue. The time for that parade is 11 o'clock AM. Thank you, Councilman Emeritus. So, we recognize that there are many members of our community who have served in the various branches of America's Armed Forces. Two of our city council colleagues are military veterans. The Honorable William Parker Jr. served, as well as President Pro Tem Carrington, both served the United States Armed Forces. We have at least one other veteran in the audience, James McQueen, who served our nation. Are there any other veterans with us this evening?
Veteran to the streets.
Please, please rise and give a standing ovation to our nation's military service members, including both of us. The city council considered a similar resolution last November, and last November, Mr. James Sabish was still with us. He's sadly passed away since then, a resident of Pontiac's District Five, who you would often see in these chambers in his military uniform. We remember his legacy as well. So, the resolution is before us. In observation of Veterans Day, City Hall will be closed this Friday, November 10th. So, if you have any city business, that ain't the day to do it, because the City Hall and other city offices will be closed in observance of Veterans, of Veterans Day this Friday, November 10th. Mayor Grimal?
Yeah, thank you, President McGinnis. So, first of all, I, I love this resolution to give thanks to our veterans who have given so much in service to our country. And we're really excited about the fact that we'll have a Veterans Day parade this year. So, thank you to all of the organizers of that. Just a point of clarification, which is, yes, it's going to be this Saturday, so, this Saturday at 11:00 AM, but it will not be kicking off from City Hall's parking lot. It will be kicking off from the parking lot of the American Legion.
Good to know.
So, the American Legion on Auburn. I don't want people showing up to the, to the wrong spot. There were a few routes under consideration, and those have been finalized as of today. So, it will be starting from the American Legion parking lot at 11:00 AM this Saturday. And yes, as you said, it will be concluding at the corner of Jesse and Auburn, so that people can enjoy the great food of none other than Uncle Jerry's Barbecue.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion. Thank you again to the veterans from the Pontiac community, including our... community, including our two colleagues, Councilman Parker and Pro Tem Carrington. Roll call on adoption of the resolution, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, that motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Number four, is there a motion to adopt the resolution recognizing Modesto De La O?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. Uh, this resolution recognizes Modesto De La O, uh, Pontiac resident. Um, he was nationally recognized by the Veterans of Foreign Wars. He was given the Distinguished Service Award at the National Convention, uh, this year, and not only is he a Pontiac resident and grew up here in the city of Pontiac, uh, but he also is a, a member of the VFW Post 1370 located here in Pontiac on Caesar Chavez, uh, but he was previously the post commander here as well. He has a nonprofit, uh, serving his fellow veterans called Foxhole. That's come before the city council before. You may remember that we approved their, uh, 501(c)(3) designation for purposes, charitable gaming purposes, uh, but just wanted to celebrate, uh, and intentionally timed it related to this week of Veterans Day, um, acknowledging and celebrating and congratulating him on a, a well-deserved national recognition, uh, by the, the National Veterans of Foreign Wars Organization. So, that's the motion before us. Any further discussion? Congratulations and thank you again, uh, Mr. De La O, who himself is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. Roll call Clerk Doyle on the resolution.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Number five, is there a motion to adopt the resolution celebrating the appointment of Attorney Monique Sharp?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. This resolution celebrates the appointment of Attorney Monique Sharp to the 36th District Court Bench of the state of Michigan. So, uh, Attorney Sharp served, uh, in the city of Pontiac. She was an employee of the city for six, over six years, multiple roles with the city council, including, uh, legislative council, um, for multiple years. That's her final position that she had with the city of Pontiac. She then went on to be the Deputy General Counsel for the 36th District Court of Michigan, which is the largest district court in the state. It serves the entire city of Detroit, where she calls home. Uh, so, on October 26th, Governor Gretchen Whitmer, in her infinite wisdom, very wisely, uh, chose to appoint Attorney Sharp to a vacancy on that district court bench. So, effective November 16th, uh, Attorney Sharp will be Judge Sharp. And so, this is our formal, that's right, a round of applause, uh, for Attorney Sharp. We, we announced that, and, uh, Mr. Bass from the community, uh, shared that as well, so we celebrated that informally last week, um, but now we have a formal resolution to add to the record of the city. Uh, our, uh, acknowledgement, thanks and congratulations, um, for this very major accomplishment in her professional career. Councilman Rutherford, and followed by Councilman Goodman.
Uh, black excellence at its best. Uh, she was and is one of the realest people you could ever meet, and she would correct you with wisdom, and with tact, and with grace, and that's something that sometimes isn't always shown publicly. But what I loved and respected most about her is that she knew what she knew, and she was straight up no chaser. And that's something that, when you are an individual who has to look at the law and look at it not with eyes wide shut, but with eyes wide open, and giving us sound advice, uh, she is missed, she's gonna do an amazing job as a judge, and as I said, black excellence at its finest.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman?
Yeah, I mean, I just really want to congratulate, uh, Attorney Sharp, well, just again, it's gonna be, uh, Judge, uh, Sharp. When I first took counsel, when all of us took counsel, she was a very, uh, strong source of knowledge for a lot of us, and I listened to and heeded a lot of her, uh, words and advice. Uh, I did text her at the moment that I found out, like, uh, before, we mentioned at the council meeting, um, because she just was a very, uh, strong force of knowledge for all of us, and her and I actually made the joke a few different times about, uh, her next career step, like, if I find some way to get her appointed to be judge, find some way to do it, and it's already happened all on her own, so I'm, you know, just so unbelievably, uh, happy that I got to, uh, know and work with her before then, and I'm very happy and excited for her going forward.
Very good. Mayor Grimal?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really, really thrilled about this. I've known, uh, I'll, I'm gonna claim it now, I don't think she's been sworn in yet, but I've known Judge Sharp, uh, for a number of years, since before I was mayor here, and just hold her in very, very high esteem. I always say that public servants, elected officials, should have both a good mind and a good heart, and that's probably nowhere more important than when it comes to judges. And certainly, uh, Judge Sharp has both a good mind and a good heart. Uh, this is, I think, a, a great, great, happy moment, not just for Judge Sharp, but really for the people of the city of Detroit who are served by the 36th District Court because they're getting a really, really great additional judge to the bench there, and just couldn't be happier for both Judge Sharp and the people of Detroit.
Thank you. Further discussion? Congratulations again to Judge Tobee, uh, the Honorable Monique Sharp. Roll call on adoption of the resolution, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Number six, is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve, uh, the Class C bistro licenses?
So moved.
All right, it's, uh, moved, uh, by Councilman Rutherford. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilwoman James. So, Cager Burger is located at 7 North Saginaw, Suite 1A, in downtown Pontiac, Michigan. Uh, it is on Saginaw Street, uh, kind of across the street from the Strand Theater, to orient yourself. It previously was Experimentation Brewing Company for a number of years, so this is a new business, and, uh, we'll give the floor to the mayor and, and the economic development manager who can explain, uh, that a community member was inquiring about the nature of that, the license. This city council has considered, uh, a few of them already. Uh, it is essentially a, a more affordable and more achievable liquor license, uh, that a community, uh, can authorize a private applicant to pursue. So, this, they still have to go through with the state of Michigan and the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, but it requires each local community to say, are you even allowing them to proceed forward? Um, many other municipalities, it's, it's permitted in other municipalities as well, um, but some liquor licenses can cost over $100,000, which is extremely expensive, so we don't want to try and put that owner's burden, per se, on, uh, establishments in our community. Um, and this is, the two that we have, this city council approved already was at 12, uh, oh, I don't want to get the edges wrong, 7 North Saginaw, Sunset Island, Ronnie McNeer's, um, Business Venture, and then at 4, 2 and 4 North Saginaw, the former Four Brothers Lounge. They ultimately have not opened, and again, there's many other factors. This doesn't say for certain this will happen, um, but those are the two actions that the city council has taken with those types of licenses that the state of Michigan allows. Mayor Grimal, anything further before we give it to the economic development manager?
No, I think, uh, you summed it up, uh, so I'll defer directly to our economic development manager, Deborah Younger.
Thank you, uh, mayor and council. A redevelopment liquor license is just that, uh, it's a designation for redevelopment areas. The downtown is such a redevelopment area. The requirements for redevelopment liquor license are a minimum of $90,000 of investment, so, uh, the applicant has to make investment in downtown. Um, it, it also requires that 75% of the sales are attributed to food, 25% are, uh, attributed to alcohol, and the process is much more affordable. A redevelopment liquor license costs about $20,000 as opposed to, I'm working with another entity, there are right now 33, uh, licenses in abeyance that are available to be purchased throughout Oakland County. Um, the latest, uh, cost that I heard that one of the people wanted to sell their license was in excess of $500,000. So, this is in fact a way to see redevelopment happen in our downtown, which is a designated redevelopment, uh, liquor license area. Again, the applicant has met the criteria that are set, which is at least $90,000 in investment, 75% of, uh, the sales will go to food, uh, and 25 for beverages. This, just so you know, those of you not familiar, this is, um, Fillmore 13 is part owner of Cager Bill, he, uh, Cager Burger, he has some other partners, but this is an extension. Um, I'm glad to see that he's taken a chance. He stood in downtown through, um, times that weren't so great, through the pandemic, and is risking investment into a second operation, so I'm very supportive, and I think we all should be supportive of this application for redevelopment liquor license.
Councilman Parker?
Real quick. So, as they're applying for this, could this not fall under the umbrella of Fillmore 13?
Um, they, they have different investors, and as such, they want a different LLC. It could have, uh, right now, it is utilizing the liquor license of, uh, Fillmore 13, but in essence, there are different, uh, investors, and God forbid, if the Fillmore went down and/or the Cager, one would not take the other down. So, because there are different owner entities, uh, the owner of Fillmore 13 is the major investor in both, but the, he has different partners on Cager Burger.
Follow-up question. But you, I thought you mentioned earlier that the, the applicant had to have at least $90,000 of?
Investment.
Investments. So, does these owners have that?
Yes. Um, they, the buildout of the property, um, is well in excess of, of $90,000.
Yeah, to clarify that further, it's about the improvements to the building, and that's part of the benefit for why we, as a community, we even want it. It's to try and use it as an incentive to say, this is more affordable, but you've gotta uplift a, a, a building that needs it. So, that's why it's like a catalyst for those buildings. So, it's not just that they have to have assets, they've got to have put those dollars into that space, and that's the only way they'd be eligible for this, is if they spent those resources to upgrade the space.
They're required to provide receipts, um, and I have verified those receipts, in fact, that they've invested more than $90,000.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Councilman Nicholson?
The, uh, $20,000, that the present on the bistro license, is that subject to state?
Correct.
Okay.
But they still have to go.
Other municipalities that have been hired.
They still have to go through the process, which I, um, I don't write the laws, they still have to contact every license held in abeyance, um, and by certified mail, and contact all of them. Um, in some instances, some of the license owners, in case of Sunset, have offered to partner with them. They make them go through that process, then when the license come back unaffordable, the state says, okay, we'll give it to you for $20,000, providing, just so you know, this is just one step. The state still has to come by and inspect the facility, um, so, there are several steps. The state could, even though we approve it, could deny it because the facility is not deemed up to par. So, this is, this is one step towards the liquor license, but there's still several steps going forward.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list is exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve the specialty designated merchant and Class C bistro licenses as requested by the petitioner, Cager Burger, located at 7 North Saginaw, Suite 1A, in downtown Pontiac, Michigan. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We're at number seven now. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the mayor to execute the FEMA Public Assistance Grant Program agreement? Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. This, uh, agreement is between the Michigan Department of State Police, Emergency Management, and Homeland Security Division, and the city of Pontiac. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, this is, uh, some additional, uh, good news, uh, coming from our grants department, and I want to just, uh, sort of set the table for, uh, this item by saying that FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Administration, uh, provides for grants to cover COVID expenses back in 2020. And this is a really great opportunity for the city to recover expenses that it incurred back then. This was not easy, however, because, uh, the city did not do a good job of documenting its COVID expenses back in 2020, and it had started putting together a grant application for a really small, paltry amount of money, and we learned of that effort that never really came to fruition, so we, uh, set about, and when I say we, I really mean one of our employees in particular, who's here with us this evening, Renee Hall, who did an amazing job, a truly amazing, almost miraculous job of piecing back together, two or three years after the fact, a slew of COVID expenses that were never well documented at the time, and so Renee did a Herculean task of putting this together so that the city has now qualified for over $400,000 in recoverable expenses. So, Renee, of course, it's a team effort, but Renee in particular deserves all the credit in the world, and we're happy to welcome her this evening to present, um, the details of this. So, first of all, thank you for your amazing work, Renee, and we look forward to hearing more about the details.
What you doing to Mike, please? The right one?
The right one?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much for the introduction. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, the city of Pontiac was awarded $432,386.88 in funding to reimburse the city for activities that provided emergency protective measures during the COVID-19 pandemic, um, which created immediate, an immediate threat to health and safety, uh, of the general public. The purpose of the Public Assistance Grant Program was to provide supplemental financial assistance for disaster relief in eligible areas within the state, including funds for emergency protective measures, actions taken to eliminate or lessen immediate threats to lives, public health, or safety. Funds from the Public Assistance Grant Program were utilized to assist in the sanitation and disinfection of, disinfecting of all city buildings, dissemination of information to the public via signage, installation of temporary partitions, as well as the purchase of COVID-19 supplies. This grant was issued on a reimbursement basis for expenses incurred in a prior year, uh, substantiated by invoices and documentation of work completed. Originally, this, uh, uh, we applied, well, prior administration applied for $50,000. Um, after we, FEMA notified us that we, uh, had this grant, and it wasn't in compliance, we found out that we actually could, um, submit a million dollars worth of, uh, COVID expenses. Um, so we gathered all that we could, and, um, we were able to come up with the 400, they approved $432,386. Oh, my God, let me say that again. Um, and I will take any of your questions.
Well, thank you again, truly amplifying on behalf of the residents of Pontiac. So, just to recap, 50 grand, what was in the mix before, and then due to the, the grants and philanthropy team and, and Ms. Hall, we were able to expand that from 50,000 in grant funding to 430,000, um, which is a very big deal, but also painstaking, so thank you very, very much for that. Uh, further discussion on the motion before us, Councilman Rutherford?
I'm trying to find out, it's a, it's a, it's a charge I'm kind of confused about, for the Marriott Residence Inn?
I don't think that have anything to do with FEMA.
So, I must have the wrong package because it's in disregard.
Okay.
I just, yeah.
No problem.
All right. All right, further discussion on the motion before us? All right, hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the FEMA Public Assistance Grant Program agreement between the Michigan Department of, Michigan Department of State Police, Emergency Management, and Homeland Security Division, and the city of Pontiac. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted, and the mayor is authorized to execute that grant program agreement. Thank you again to the Grants and Philanthropy Team and thinking Ms. Hall.
Thank you.
All right. We are at number eight. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment?
So move.
Moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Rutherford. This proposed budget amendment would establish budget revenue in the amount of $432,386.88. Should sound familiar? That dollar was just, amount was just flagged for us by Ms. Hall. It would be to count 101000516.000 federal grants help. So that's been moved and seconded. This establishes the budget revenue for that grant funding that we have just approved on the execution of the grant agreement. Anything further that needs to be expounded upon? Grants and philanthropy and mayor?
I do not have anything to add. This is just publishing a budget amendment to reflect the grant amount.
That's right. It'll be back before us in two city council meetings. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Roll call Clerk Doyle on the resolution authorizing you to publish the proposed budget amendment.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted, and the clerk's office is authorized to publish that proposed budget amendment. It'll be back before us in two city council meetings. Number nine. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the purchase manager to award the bid to CAC Asset Solution LLC and Onsite Solutions, Inc., doing business as Versapro Restoration and Construction?
Some was.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford and seconded by Councilman Nicholson. This also authorizes the mayor or deputy mayor to execute an agreement with both firms to allow the city's code enforcement division to board up and secure court-ordered property abatements and emergency property structures throughout the city. This came up in our Economic Development, Housing and Planning Subcommittee this month and is seen as a need by the city's code enforcement team. Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. This is a proposed contract to remediate blight. So when we go out and we ticket properties that are blighted, and we go to court and we say, hey, this person has to clean up this property, one of two things happens. Either they clean it up on their own, and problem solved, or if they don't clean it up, we get a court order allowing us to clean it up, and then bill that property owner to reimburse us for the expense. And in those situations, we need to have a vendor who actually we secure to clean up the property and then seek reimbursement from the blighted property owner. And so this is a proposed contract for that blight remediation in those instances when we have to do it ourselves as the city. And here to talk in greater detail about the selection process, the competitive bid process, and why we went with this particular company are our purchasing manager, Alicia Martin, and our code enforcement manager, Jack McIntyre, both of whom were very directly involved in the process.
Okay. Thank you. So Purchasing posted the solicitation for requests, well, I'm sorry, it's the request for qualifications for court-ordered property abatement and emergency structure boardups on September 7, 2023. The solicitation process concluded on September 29, 2023. A total of 17 firms had access to view or download the solicitation documents, and a total of five firms submitted a response. After evaluating all the firms' cost proposals and qualifications, two firms were shortlisted for an interview. Those two firms were CAC Asset Solutions LLC and Onsite Restoration. After concluding interviews with both of those firms, the recommendation was to move forward to recommend, to execute an agreement and to award the bid, or to award the bid and then execute an agreement.
Yeah. So as the mayor said in the introduction, we are obtaining court orders from district court almost weekly now. We have, our court docket is every Monday. We have six pending abatements that can take place as soon as we select a company and our companies and get them started on that. And we have probably 15 to 20 show cause hearings that are coming up in the next week or two that will, from our perspective, probably produce additional abatement orders for these properties. So this is very necessary. We, we, the purchasing department was kind enough to kind of put things into a spreadsheet. We looked at several of the qualities of the bid. One thing in particular that stood out with me was response time. In the past, we've struggled sometimes having someone show up, especially when it's an emergency boardup. We come, if code enforcement comes across a door that's open or a window that's been broken, we need someone to be able to respond quickly to that. And that was one of the things I looked at, at this spreadsheet that was produced by the purchasing department, was that these two companies in particular had a two-hour response time, that they would respond within two hours of a phone call to respond to those emergency needs. So if you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Councilman Rutherford.
I just want to just thank you publicly for all the work you do in the code enforcement department. I have never seen people who truly value and do this job well, especially with Mr. Watkins, who's our code enforcement officer in District 1, and just boarding up and holding even the county accountable for buildings that they own that we just found out, making sure that everyone is putting their feet on the floor and getting things done. So I just want to publicly thank you for that because we have major ISORS on the corridors, on Woodward, on Luther, on Franklin, and just you doing the work that you do that people don't even know about. I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. And again, I say this all the time. I, I'm almost amazed every day at the enthusiasm of the people in my department. They're just as excited to do what we're doing as I am. They come up with a lot of creative ideas of how we can accomplish it. And we talk every single week in our staff meetings. You're all welcome to come. Every Wednesday morning at 8:30, we have our staff meetings. So the enthusiasm, they feel, they feel the appreciation, and it truly motivates them to do more and more every day. So thank you.
Councilman Nicholson.
So I, I know that the budget is not to exceed $300,000, but we're recuperating that through abatements or tax assessments. My question is, I wonder, and this might be more for the administration or finance, I think the finance committee would be interested in seeing, I know it's going to be years rolled back, but as we continue to go down this road, just to see if there's some way to be able to track between the parcel numbers, the amount that's recuperated, just to see that we are actually recuperating that full $300,000. I mean, I know it's going to be, there's court fees and finance fees that come off of that, but I just wanted to see if there's any way we could try to track those parcels to see what that recovery version is. Because that whole $300,000 isn't going to be 100% recovered because of the cost associated. But I just want to know, like, what we can in the future decide budgetarily is the actual?
Thank you. So
Yeah, thanks.
So they actually will be reimbursed in full. Whatever is applied fee-wise to the cleanup, the abatement, the court order includes that that full amount gets applied to the property. So if that's not paid within a 45-day timeframe from the time that they're billed, then it would be assessed against and put on their taxes.
Great. Yeah. I think it'd be interesting. I'll talk to the finance department, I suppose, to see if there's some way that we can start to track that. I know it's, it's in arrears, but
Yeah. So it's all done internally through the billing system, so I'm sure it'll be very easy to track.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent questions. Councilman James?
Now, I'd like to know, are any of these firms minority firms that you consider, the five firms that applied?
By minority, definition of minority. There, one company, you mean ethnicity-wise? I'm always stuck on that question.
Yes.
So one, I would say one definitely is, and one possibly could be?
The one that was chosen?
Well, we chose two. We chose two organizations.
So this is for CAC and Onsite Restoration?
That's correct. Right.
So both of them could be called for restoration jobs?
Right. And so the reason, I wasn't quite sure why we did that. And then the purchasing department during these meetings kind of explained that if we go with one company, and that company starts to maybe change their billing, maybe things become more expensive. We have the option of getting a bid from another company as well. And then that way, it's more competitive between the two of them.
Okay. Are either one of those listed as a minority supplier?
I can get that information for you. My purchasing assistant tabulated this. I can get that information for council, because I don't have an answer today to give.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on the motion before us. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call and adoption of the resolution approving the purchasing manager to award the bid, and the mayor or deputy mayor to execute an agreement with the firms of CAC Asset Solution LLC and Onsite Solutions, Inc., doing business as Versapro Restoration and Construction, to allow the city's code enforcement division to board up and secure court-ordered property abatements and emergency property structures throughout the city. Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Good. James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Thank you very much for code enforcement, and we want to echo Councilman Rutherford's praise. Since you're here as appointed personal privilege, I'd like to give you the floor. If you'd like to give the latest statistics on how many code violations the code enforcement division has done for tall grass, for, it's just really mind-blowing. Councilwoman James had a very successful District 4 meeting last night, and from what the figures were a month ago to what they are now, it continues to grow exponentially.
Yeah. So I think off the top of my head, I don't have the numbers I brought to you Monday morning.
16,000.
Pardon me?
It was 16,000.
Yeah. It's roughly about 16,000 code enforcement inspections that we've done throughout all districts since January. I think just under 7,000, probably closer to 6,700 rental inspections, and
1,900 tall grass violations.
There you go. Yeah, just about, yeah, just under 1,900 tall grass violations, so.
And one more thing.
Councilman Rutherford.
Can you, that does deserve a hand clap.
Yeah, round of applause.
I applaud for you.
Thank you.
Because you're doing your job. Can you please also let people be aware of us doing the escrow accounts, and how people can still do that when their landlord simply just won't fix stuff and go?
Is it appropriate for me to do the usual speech that I do? Is that okay?
You be the judge.
Okay. So two very important things happened on August 1 of 2023. First and most importantly, I turned 60 years old.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. Secondly, all of you passed a resolution, an amendment to our rental ordinance that allows for tenants that are living in substandard conditions, more importantly, properties that are not registered as rentals, and properties that are not current on inspection. It gives them the ability to come in and instead of paying rent to a derelict landlord who isn't doing right by them, they can come and deposit that rent money into a 30-day escrow account here at City Hall in the Treasury Department. The landlord is notified on that day that their rent is not being paid to them, but instead to an escrow account. If they don't correct things within 30 days, bring the property up to code, that money is reimbursed 100% in full to the, to the tenant. And if they choose to stay, they can do, enter into an additional 30-day escrow account. And our goal is, and you know, we've had lots of discussions about this, is that we really want to put pressure on these landlords, that they can't come to Pontiac, they can't buy a house, and they can't do nothing to it, and then convince someone who's in a desperate situation that that's their only option. We know that there's better options for folks. And, and so I'm very grateful to all of you for having the foresight. The mayor and I had these discussions early on when I first came on, that we wanted to do something that would be impactful. And this is it. We have people coming in every single day, bringing their rent to us instead of to the landlord. And we have landlords calling just about every day wanting to know what they need to do to get rent payments. So it's working, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And a round of applause for you and your tire, tire team.
Thank you.
That is massive, massive work, but it's making differences in our neighborhoods every day.
Thank you.
We are, Councilwoman James?
Can you just let him mention about Glenwood Plaza, just to mention?
That's right. So Council, Pro Tem, and District 6, Pro Tem Carrington has been strongly advocating for addressing the blight, ongoing blight that have been issues for years, if not decades, at Glenwood Plaza, located at Glenwood, Paddock, Perry, that vicinity. Many of you know it through the decades, what it was in the great heyday, but also sadly what it has deteriorated and derelict to come. So a lot of headway based upon you and Inspector Henyon's work. Want to give you the floor if you can give the council and the community an update on Glenwood Plaza. If there's no objection for us going off, off-script.
No.
All right.
Thank you. So last spring, we issued a ticket to the then-owner of Glenwood Plaza for the condition of the property. We were in court. They defaulted on that, on that court date. And in the process of going from a default judgment, which is when someone doesn't appear in court for their court date, to a show cause hearing, which is when the judge compels them to come to court and say, why didn't you show up when we asked you to show up? That property was sold from a, from the original owner to a holding company based out of California. And that company has two or three very interested potential buyers that would like to buy that property permanently and redevelop it. There is a period of time, and Councilman Carrington, I got lots of phone calls from him almost on a daily basis. I need to know what's going on there. So what happened was, they were allotted a time, the holding company were, they, there was a redemption period where the original owner could take the property back. And so that holding company, we already had a judgment against the original owner. We now issued a ticket against the holding company. The holding company went to our court and said, hey, would you please release us of this redemption period so that we can respond to the city's needs regarding this property? We're very interested in cleaning it up. So through a stipulated plea agreement with the holding company, they promised that as soon as they're granted jurisdiction to go on the property, that they, they put together a schedule. The first thing we said is, we want to fence up. We want a fence that's gonna, you know, not be something that we see when we drive by there, where we're not offended by what's going on at the property, and we want to stop people from going in there and dumping there. So then we had a schedule of things. They removed 20 30-yard dumpsters, and they removed two semis, four vehicles, two boats, and a trailer, and as we said the other morning, and a partridge in the pear tree. So they cleaned up most of it. They're not completely done. The gates still need to be installed. There's a little hiccup on the gates coming in, but they've gotten all the clearances. They pulled permits. So we're really happy. We're really excited with the movement there. It's, it's definitely something from the time I came to Pontiac many years ago, that I said, we got to get this fixed. This is, this is terrible the way it looks. And just so you know, on Thursday, Thursday nights, I would sit across the street, and it seemed like a lot of dumping was happening on Thursday nights. And I had like a system with the sheriff's department. So as soon as I saw some dumping going on, I would alert the sheriff's department. Their tickets are more effective. They were a $500 dump, dumping ticket plus potentially a 90-day misdemeanor. So we're really happy with the results there. I know Inspector Henyon, who has been taking pictures almost weekly and providing updates to Pro Tem Carrington, he's probably, there's no one that's more thrilled than Inspector Henyon. He's very happy about this. He actually said, I think my work here is done. So he, so that's the update there.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman James, for prompting that. Thank you, sir, to you and your team for, it was a priority for the residents of Pontiac, so we're pleased to see progress.
That's great.
And we'll be vigilant for further results.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. With that, we are now at public comment. Councilman Rutherford, who's first?
Tangi Daniel. So Bill Maxie.
Now it starts. Good evening to Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac and governance. H. Bill Maxie, community activist, and representative of Michigan Senior Advisory, Council, and the military tonight. Brief message. On November 11, we're having a veterans parade in the city of Pontiac. The first parade in 10 years. The features of this parade, location, 11 o'clock, Justin at Auburn, American Legion parking lot. parking lot. We turn right on Auburn, on Justin, go down to Whittmore, turn, going east, and coming back on Jesse. There we will feed our veterans. We have an honor roll recognizing our veterans and their families posthumously, and the ones that are currently serving our country. We are very happy that, and pleased that this took place. Let me tell you about the lines of communication, so you will all understand. For once, we had collaboration and communication from Michigan Senior Advisory Council, ACES, State Representative Carter, and the signage ended up with the mirror signing on saying okay. That's what you all need to listen to, sitting at the council, communication and collaboration. These entities can work together, but I had to say this because some of you think you're the Lone Ranger, and you could only, things happen, but communication, I'll say it again, collaboration between these agencies give us the honor of recognizing our veterans, as well as myself. Thirty years, I'm always last. So with that, again, we citizens, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, appreciate the collaboration. I'm talking to you, Mr. President, you're reading, and I don't think you're listening, and you know I'm dead on your case about paying attention. I'm talking, a veteran, and I want you to hear this. So we'll be ending up at Juris on Auburn and Jesse. We have an honor roll, for those of you who come and attend, we'll have your signature on this honor roll, and next week I'll talk about adding every single veteran that we could find, posthumously and presently, that we could add to our honor roll. This is what I'm talking about, paying attention and listening.
That is your time.
And cooperation, thank you much.
You're welcome. Dr. Deidre Waterman?
I was glad to see the agenda item in which you're getting the firms to help with abatements and clean up, start cleaning up the blighted commercial properties. That was a big goal that we wanted to do during my administrations. We had such blighted neighborhoods from so many residential homes that were blighted and abandoned, and just a pock market in our neighborhoods. So we dedicated ourselves to use TARP money. We had about a thousand deteriorated residences that we started with. By the end of staying with this project and getting that done, to correct our neighborhoods and build up our property values, we ended up taking down nine hundred blighted facilities, and just got a hundred ones that were renovated or refurbished by people who take that project on. This is a big project, and I'm glad you're finishing that by going ahead and getting the commercial facilities, because there are some that are just blighting our neighborhoods, and we want to make sure that that project is completed. But what I do want to also bring to your attention is something that I have been introducing, trying to figure out how to solve some of the things in terms of people saying they don't know what's going on, or things that are not decided before they even know about it, and I thought that in the light of what's, what I could do to help to continue to advance what I call the legacy projects that we were proud to establish, was something we called Spirit of Pontiac Facebook group. Spirit of Pontiac, you may remember, was something we established as part of the Oakland University Partnership, and that was to advance the ten big legacy projects that were transformative for the city of Pontiac. And this is a Facebook group, and it will help for people who have questions about, you know, sometimes people come here and they hear part of the story, and they're still not quite sure what's going on. And if you want to know the rest of the story about important events in the city of Pontiac, this is what this Facebook group is established for. If you have a question or comment that you want to contribute to the public discussion, this is what that's for. If you are a Pontiac homeowner or a small business owner, and you want more information on how to get your share of the city's three, thirty-seven-point-eight million dollars of ARPA funding, relief money, and you haven't gotten it yet, you don't know where to turn and what's happening with that, we'll have some information on that. In fact, we may have one question a week that we let people respond to, and have people really engage on that. So I've been introducing this at a couple of the district meetings, we'll continue to do that, it's been very well received, we've gotten some other information and some insight on how people will think that it would be a good part of the community forum and discussion for their community, and what the rest of the story is and things that they want to know about before they're decided.
Thank you. Beatrice White, and up next, after that would be Carlton Jones.
Good evening again. I want to talk about several things, so I get, what I'm gonna do is just highlight some interests that I have. First of all, I want to congratulate Sean Fain and the UAW for a record of improvement in the auto industry. I don't know if there's anybody in here who knows of a twenty-five percent salary increase, so I say congratulations to you. And he got it done, they got it done. I also wanted to talk about Pride and Beautification quickly. I want to talk about the polarity that seems to be existing in the Pontiac Knowles community. I want to talk about Ms. Tamika Ramsey, who I would like to commend for the hard work that you do to support small businesses, and I have a scholarship for you. I also want to talk about the business or the political model that we use here in Pontiac as we serve the public. You know, most people know about a medical model. I know the doctor in the house knows about a medical model. Medical model says that you're sick, and I'm gonna fix you. But there's a preventative model as well, and there's a posthumous model. I'm interested in us looking more at a preventative model, especially as it looks at our citizens, protecting them. And I don't know where you put it, maybe you put it as a blurb at the end of some electronic expose that you have, maybe like this meeting. Maybe you say something to the citizens, it's wise to cross at the light. If you need help, you can get it here. Do you have a family member who has a mental issue? Here's where you can look for help. You know, you see these things in the public all the time, but I'm talking about you doing it, because you exercise a model too. Which one do you, which one do you exercise? Do you exercise medical model, preventative model, posthumous model? As it relates to Pride and Beautification, I'm gonna skip to that one, I'm gonna go back to that one. I want to commend you on Pride and Beautification, but I think before you just say, oh yeah, I mean, rah rah rah, I'd like to give you some suggestions. I talk to people in the community, how did your district do? Terrible, I didn't see one sign. How did your district do? Oh boy, they just did wonderful. How did your district do? Well, what is Pride and Beautification? Some people didn't even know what it was. I think if you develop your Pride and Beautification, and I thought that the timeline was wonderful, so I wouldn't mess with that, but I would seek out horticulturists in your district to help you, help you do this, you know?
Your time, isn't it?
And I would, and just give me one second more, and I would, when you plant those signs, people are very excited when you plant those signs. Give them a invitation to your reception right at that moment, that's when you have them. That's when they'll put that on their refrigerator, and they'll show up, and you won't be sending me home with all of your beverages and food. Thank you so much.
Carlton Jones, and after that will be Pastor Kathy, and then after that will be Tamika Ramsey.
Yeah. Let me say, I appreciate the enthusiasm we all were talking about, Mr. McIntyre, and I agree. Our city has been one, has been one that we just, seems like we've just been overlooked. And so once we start doing something, we do get excited, we get some passion about how we can uplift our city. And I let that go around, because I have been talking consistently about workforce development, and I know people can say, well, it can come along, but if you look at this county we live in, we live in this richest county, and somehow or another, I cannot fathom the idea of why Pontiac has the lowest average, medium income. That affects everything, and if we really want to make a difference, we can continue to give people fish, but we gotta teach them how to fish. We have to do that, that's really important. And I want to let you know, we found out now with TDC, after we've been doing this and workforce development, and let me just tell everybody, TDC is not about trying to get somebody into starter jobs. It's about developing talent for high-demand, high-paying positions. That's what we set out to do, is how we can get people in high-demand, high-paying positions. It takes time to try to develop them. We got setback with COVID, so if we get some COVID relief, it should be nice to see how we can help individuals come along and get the proper training so they can increase their income level. It will help in so many ways. We have decided that we're gonna start a fitness camp. A fitness camp is where we found out from the people that they, the people trying to hire, our people weren't fit. They weren't fit to take these positions, and we couldn't say anything about it. We had to say, okay, what can we do to go to work to try to get them in a better position? Now, this is not like going to McDonald's or someplace, it's talking about, if you want to go to a high-paying, high-demand position, you have to be trained and developed. That's what TDC is all about. And I want everybody to know, when we have some developers that come in here, they recognize that, and I'm glad to say, recently we had a developer who's interested in Jefferson Junior High School over on Motor Street, contacted us and saying they want this to be a community project. They want it to be a community project, and we support that. They're not asking for a zoning change, they want to take that place and redo it and use it in the community. And they reached out to us to say, how can we help to get community support to make this real? I commend them for that, and I'm hoping that you all can work along with them also to make sure that we can make it a great benefit for the community. So I'm just glad to see that we understand that, and that we truly are gonna truly start working together for the betterment of the citizens of Pontiac.
That is your time, thank you. Pastor Kathy, after that will be Tamika Ramsey, and then after that will be Chuck Johnson.
I have three points tonight. First of all, thank you for the positive meeting. This is great, it can be done. I want to thank Mark Yadrak for the ton of work that he's already accomplished since he's been here. My word, just getting the information together to put those maps together, and I mean, it's a lot of work, and he's done a lot so far. Also wanted, I don't know how this city lived without Alex Bordgesser. That girl is a saint. She is so knowledgeable, and she has done so much to bring money into this city. She just, she's amazing, and what did we do before we had her? I'm just very, very grateful for these two new department heads. I know there are others, but those are the two that I've been most involved with, and I'm thankful for them, it's making a big difference. And finally, the unsung heroes in this city are our veterans. I'm the wife of a veteran. I worked at West Point with the West Point boys for eighteen months while we were in the service. I have two sons who were in the service, and I'm very proud of that. Not all Army, one was a Navy submariner, I always have to make that differentiation. They give, they go in as young men, they come out as old men, and some of them are only two years older. Some of them have seen atrocities, some of them have committed atrocities because it's part of war. A lot of us in this room have lived through multiple wars, real wars, not skirmishes, real wars, and some of our family didn't live to come home. Some of them came home differently. Some of them will never be what they were when they went in, and we dismiss them as those old guys in the funny uniforms on Veterans Day or Fourth of July parades. Those old guys are the reason we have this city.
Thank you so much. Thank you. It will be Ms. Tamika Ramsey, after that will be Darlene Clark.
Good evening, everyone. So I am back before you to start talking about Small Business Saturday again. I'm gonna be here every week until Small Business Saturday, and then I'll come the following week to say how well we did. This year, the Coalition of the City of Pontiac, Main Street Pontiac, we've added a new member, Micah Six, who is now a part of Main Street Oakland County with the Huron Corridor. Pontiac Community Foundation and T. Ramsey and Associates will be doing a passport program this year. So lots of, not a lot of work, hopefully a lot of payoff. So what we're trying to do is make an interactive map of the businesses in the city of Pontiac. People will be able to get a passport, a business passport, whether that's from the city, it could, they could pick it up from Main Street, and then what we're asking them to do is, starting on Friday, Black Friday, they will go to local small businesses. These small businesses will have a stamp, so that they can stamp that people have come, and our goal is to have people use this map to go around the city to do small business shopping. This will be from Friday, February, Friday, November 24th until Saturday, December 9th. So we are really excited, we are going to be pushing this really hard. We are also working with Kermit Williams Presents, who will be going to businesses on Friday and Saturday to highlight them. So we are really excited about that. We also have pop-ups that are happening in the city, and this is for brick and mortar, because we want to highlight our brick and mortar businesses in the city of Pontiac. We are also supporting and highlighting pop-ups that are happening, and right now we have two pop-ups that are planned. We have Dre Jeter, who will be doing, I'm sorry, Don Dre, Don Dre Jeter, who will be doing a small business Black Friday pop-up on Friday, November the 24th, from four to six, at his space at 374 North Telegraph. This will be small businesses that are vendoring, so those with non-brick and mortar. We will then have, on the 25th, Pontiac Small Business Saturday with, oh, I'm sorry, hosted by Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford, presented by Luminosity Naturals, Consult Chris and The Strand. We also have Lee Greer, who is also at 248 Hotspots, who will also be doing a pop-up, and Esha Branner will be doing a pop-up with her Women in Small Business group. So we are, we talk about supporting small businesses. When we support small businesses, we support our community, because those dollars get reinvested into our community, and I'm hoping that everybody will be a part of this program. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council Administration and Mr. Garland. This is Darlene Clark. First, I'd like to address an issue to the mayor with all due respect. Mr. Mayor, this question is for you. I was in a meeting with you at MDOC, and you made a comment that really insulted me. You insulted me, number one, as a taxpayer. Maybe I didn't get clarity and didn't quite understand your agenda for saying what I'm finna say, but you said to me that I'm a confrontation person. I get paid to be confrontation, and I get paid because I pay my taxes. With that, I need to know and ask the question that the residents cannot ask. Secondly, I wanted to address this to the administration, to the council. You hired a contractor management. Two questions that I didn't hear you ask throughout this whole duration. Number one is that, how much is this construction manager, what is his income gonna be? Is it gonna be twenty percent of the job rendered, or is it per job? Most contractor managers get paid per job, twenty percent and more, as far up at forty percent of the cost to bill. So if you have a $2 million... So if you have a $2 million building being built, he gets up to, he can get up to 40% of that bill just by being in the manager. Also, what I want to address to the council on October 17th, and Melanie, you are a person who deal with facts, and I'm not trying to attack you, but I'm trying to get clarity. I have a recording here where you made a comment because right now, the bridge is...
We ain't gonna do that. I mean, that is very much necessary. I'm tired of not knowing where I'm going when I go down the street. I might be blocked off and kicking, who knows where. I know it's not your fault.
Thank you.
But I understand that you have to use this grant money, so won't everybody do the bridge?
So this is what happened. Our illustrious state rep, Brenda Carter, secured $10 million. Then Haley Stevens secured $3 million. But we still don't have enough for this bridge. It's going to, I'm, I'm being transparent because you asked the question.
I just said to myself...
And the RRP that we've had out there, many people haven't bid on it because they don't want to go and bid in it. So I suggested that they use other forms of giving this information out so that other people can have an opportunity to bid on the work. That's why, if you want to, if you remember when I ran, I talked about the park, uh, what's the park that's on South Boulevard? R Dunlap. The R Dunlap is not done because the RRP has been out there and no one has bid on it. So the issue isn't that it's not being out, it's not being promoted. The issue is if no one doesn't, if no one doesn't bid on it, we can't get the work.
So my, so my question to you, Mayor? Do you, because you have announced multiple times that we have enough because of all the grants and money that's been coming in for this bridge. I'm not trying to be confrontation, but I'm trying to get clarity as a taxpayer. Do you or do you not have enough to move forward to have this bridge built on time?
Gloria Miller.
First, I want to start with some business for the city, since I'm getting a lot of call in my district. Councilman Parker, there is a home on University. I contacted you when I, I think when you first got in office. And I don't want to call the number, but it's on University in Bay. It looks disaster again. It's been, it's been to the court, by court and all that. I don't know what the new mayor got. Something needs to happen to this guy. I world passed that today. Cars all over, all in the grass, like a car shop. Something got to happen. You know, it makes you kind of wonder, who do he know in the city to get away with this? Because he's been through it so many times. And I think I got somebody over here that know what I'm talking about. She live in the district. Let's do something about that, Parker. We just, we got to, we got to clean it up. Those people home cost too much money for that kind of nonsense. Also, if anyone up there can address, when is the last day for picking up the leaves? We get a lot of questions and all that, so you can announce that publicly. So the last day of picking up the leaves for the city. Also, I want to go to the community center. You know, I worked in the community center for years. That's where I came from when I worked in the city Pontiac Community Center. Now, I want you, Mayor, to explain, how much is it going to cost to build that community center over at McConnell? I know that I, I see on the Facebook page that, you know, they putting the tanks and up and all that kind of stuff. How much is it going to cost to build a building? Do we have any design, what, what the building going to look like? How long would it take to build this community center that we're going to have over at McCarroll? The parking and all that, has all that been worked out? I mean, has anybody seen these drawings? Maybe I haven't or anything, because I know you're clearing the land. But basically, what I really, really concern is, how much is it going to cost to build a community center? Because when I was on the council, I met with many investors, and we only had $2 million. And I was trying to find someone that could match the funds, because it's going to cost a lot of money to build a community center. It, it really does. And we, I was looking at the ones that they drove me to. I can't remember in Detroit where I went because I didn't drive, but they drove me to one that they had designed, which the deal fell through because they wanted more of the profit than what I was willing to give for the city of Pontiac. They wanted the building, and they want to keep it in our city. You don't get the building. It's ours. So I turned that down. That's how you do that. You don't, you don't never betray your people. So that's why the deal squashed, if you want to know what happened. But it was good to listen to them because it takes money to build that community center, and you got to have people to run it. You got to have staff. And me working in the city of Pontiac for many years, being in the rectums is nothing like we used to do back in the day, or running that rec center. It's, it's very, very organized. And I just want to know those few things in regards to that. And I can vouch for that tape. I was at that meeting on October 7th over at the Kappa House, and Ms. Rutherford did state that. It brought, it drawled me so back, I almost, I got up and left. So Mayor, as you said, misinformation. Got that on tape. You've been saying you got that money for this bridge. Ms. Rutherford said you don't have anything, but $10 million.
Said 13.
13.
That's what I said. That's your time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that conclude public comment?
Absolutely.
Okay. So just really briefly, a question was asked, what we voted on tonight with at-risk construction managers. We clarified the ordinance to clarify that the city could utilize that. We did not hire any construction manager or at-risk construction manager firm tonight. It was an ordinance amendment that took place. All right, we're at two brief discussions here. Number 10, national news coverage of Oakland Forward, its work with the Pontiac Warrants Clinic that received national news coverage on PBS NewsHour. You heard Council President Emeritus Kermit Williams speak about that, so we've addressed that and celebrated that, and received positive news coverage for the city of Pontiac. Any further discussion on that motion, on that topic? And thank you, Councilman Goodman, who did work on various of those warrants clinics as well. Here are no further discussion. I'm going to move on to the second item, number 11. Oakland County has announced their initiative for retiring medical debt of eligible county residents. I was looking up to confirm the information I was going to share with you, so I apologize if my reading of that was disruptive, but this is a big deal. So Oakland County is using $2 million of their American Rescue Plan funds to eliminate $200 million of medical debt for Oakland County residents. So it's a nasty secret in our capitalist, weird, hodgepodge system that we have, but that businesses and hospitals sell medical debt for pennies on the dollar. So even though you're charged and you have an outstanding balance, they're sort of shopping and trading around that debt. And so there's a nonprofit that started called RIP, rest in peace, Medical Debt, RIP Medical Debt, that buys up that, you know, potentially profitable debt at pennies on the dollar and then forgives it, wipes it out, as an altruistic, to try and relieve that burden. So there are, right now, in Oakland County, 114,000 residents out of the 1.2 million people. There's 114,000 residents that currently have outstanding medical debt in Oakland County. And this program could help up to 80,000. So that means of the 114,000 that have any medical debt in Oakland County, up to 80,000 could have this address their medical debt because they'd be buying with $2 million. They're buying $200 million worth of medical debt. So residents have asked me, you know, how do I find out more? How can I sign up? So I want to share for you, what they've shared so far is that there's no application, that beneficiaries, if you're qualified, if you're eligible, you'll receive correspondence from RIP Medical Debt in Oakland County saying as much. And that'll, might be a number of months, as many as six months, and we'll keep you updated when we find out more. But this is likely to impact many, many, many Pontiac households in a favorable way. The average Oakland County resident has about $2,500 in medical debt if they have that. Obviously, some have a greatly advanced. The qualifications that are required, at least what they've shared so far, is that whatever the federal poverty level is, it's four times that. So I was doing some math on my phone, and I'm sorry if that was distracting. It looks to be that that means for one person, a single person, that'd be about 55, $55,000 if that was your annual income. So it means there are many Pontiac residents that would be eligible for that. That's qualification A. If that isn't you, if you have a higher income, the other qualification is that if it's over 5% of your income is gobbled up by that medical debt, you qualify that way. So those are the two categories that qualify. Again, RIP Medical Debt is the entity that would be reaching out to you in the coming months. We'll let you know when we find out more because we're watching this very closely. We know this is a game changer for a lot of Pontiac families. And it's, it's a very limited, very small investment, and it can have a very big payoff. So we want to make sure that you knew that the county was taking that action. Councilman Goodman.
And I, I want to give a personal shout out to a friend of mine that is on the commission for being very adamant about doing this for a while, being Commissioner Charlie Cavell. This was a personal project of his for a very long time. Heard, we've talked about it repeatedly. At one point, we were going to, it was a discussion for one of my projects, but he's been pushing really hard for that, and I'm glad to see that it finally came to fruition with some of that upper money.
Further discussion? Again, we will keep the community updated if we find out, when we find out more in terms of when that process starts rolling. But you can feel free to notify us if RIP Medical Debt starts contacting you. Of course, we encourage every resident to be vigilant. There are always scams rampant, trying to target vulnerable populations and prey on people. So you can always contact city government if you need some confirmation, and we can try and help clarify that, check with the state attorney general's office if you receive anything that you think is suspicious. Here are no further discussion. Let's move on to public communications. District Five has their monthly meeting this coming Thursday, November 9th, 6:00 p.m., held at the Lion's Den, and there's a virtual Zoom option for those interested. The link available through the city's website. For more information, contact your city councilman, Councilman Parker for District Five. The Dirk Kroll Band, the Pontiac Band, is playing live at Pontiac's Little Art Theater Friday, November 10th, 7:00 p.m. On November 11th, you heard about the Veterans Day Parade, 11 o'clock a.m., starting at the American Legion on Auburn Avenue. Also, November 11th, the Historical Society and the Creative Arts Center has a gala auction that's Saturday evening from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And then next Monday, the 13th, is District Seven's monthly meeting from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., held at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church, 351 Prospect Street. You can contact me, Mike McGinnis, District Seven's councilperson, if you have any questions. There are additional community items that we have listed on the council agenda. You can access that if you'd like to get more details, and feel free to let us know if other information needs to be included. I will also flag, again as a reminder, City Hall will be closed this Friday, November 10th, in observance of Veterans Day. Mayor Grimal, your communications.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Just two things to mention. As I've mentioned in past weeks, I want to make sure that everyone has their calendars marked for this year's Holiday Extravaganza Parade. That will, as always, be on the first Saturday of December. This year, that is December 2nd. It will start at 11:00 a.m. And this year, we have two additional events. One is a fun run called the Elf Run at 8:00 a.m. in the morning that day on December 2nd. And then, most excitingly, for the non-fitness fanatics like me, who surely will not be participating in the fun run, is a winter festival that will happen in our downtown right after the Holiday Extravaganza Parade. So that will be from noon until 3:00 p.m. in our downtown immediately following the Holiday Extravaganza Parade. Also, wanted to make sure that everybody knows that we have now resumed paid parking in our downtown. The goal and the motivation for that is not to collect revenue. The reason for that is to make sure that cars are circulating. We have had a major problem in the past few years since the interruption of paid on-street parking downtown with employees of downtown businesses and downtown residents parking all day long on the street. And what that has meant is that it's very hard for those who are going downtown to shop or to go to restaurants to find on-street parking. So the whole point of this is to require circulation of vehicles so that it's easier to find convenient parking in our downtown. Until 6:00 p.m., there will be a two-hour parking limit. After 6:00 p.m., there will be a four-hour parking limit in terms of duration. People can pay either at the kiosks, which have all been restored to operation downtown, and those do accept both credit cards and debit cards, but also coins, except for pennies. So please do not try to pay in pennies. And then there's another option in terms of payment, which is to use a parking app on one smartphone, and that is the Passport Parking App, which can be downloaded for free. So just want to make sure that people know that parking enforcement has been reinstituted downtown.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal. We're now at closing comments. You're up, Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, thank you. So as I've said many, many times publicly and privately, the estimated cost for demolishing and rebuilding the Martin Luther King Bridge is between 12 and 15 million dollars. We have received an appropriation in the amount of $10 million from the state of Michigan, and it looks likely, although we won't know for absolute certain until December, that Congresswoman Haley Stevens has secured an additional $3.5 million from the federal government. That would total 13.5 million dollars towards this estimated price tag of somewhere between 12 and 15 million dollars. And so even if there's some shortfall, it should be a manageable shortfall that the city can address. So we are confident that we are on track to demolish and rebuild the Martin Luther King Bridge. The reason why it's an estimated amount of between 12 and 15 million dollars, and we don't have an exact amount, is we won't know the exact amount of the cost until we go out to bid for the actual construction. And we can't go out to bid for the actual construction until the design and engineering work is completed. We won't be able to begin that design and engineering work until we have a signed agreement with the state to receive that $10 million. And that's because, in order for that design and engineering work to be covered by that grant, and in fact, probably, or possibly at least, to cover the construction work, we'll need to make sure that that agreement is signed before the design and engineering work is begun. We expect that agreement to be to us from the state. We hope anyway that it'll be to us this month so that we can get that signed, and then we can commence and begin the design and engineering work. That design and engineering work will take about a year. Then we'll go out to bid based on those design and engineering specs and get a contractor on board to actually demolish the bridge and build a new bridge. That will also take about a year. So we're still a couple years out, but we do believe that we will have adequate funds between the state and the federal allotments to make that happen and make that a reality. As posted on the city's website, the last day for yard waste collection is November 30th. So we started yard waste collection in the spring. The last day for that is November 30th, and that pickup day is the same as your regular garbage pickup day. So it'll be November 30th for those who have their last, their regular day of garbage pickup falling on November 30th. But if your day for garbage pickup falls during a day that is in the week immediately preceding November 30th, that will be your household's last day for yard waste. So it'll end the week that ends on November 30th, and so plan accordingly to make sure that you have your last day of yard waste out at the curb, whatever your regular garbage pickup day is in the seven days preceding November 30th. And then finally, I want to give just a quick update in terms of the conversations regarding amending the settlement agreement with the City of Pontiac Retired Employees Association. We have agreed in concept to everything, including a guardrail around the spending on retiree healthcare for the Voluntary Employee Benefit Association, or VIBA. But there's some disagreement over exactly what that guardrail for the VIBA spending looks like. And just as we have safeguards around the $400 monthly stipend agreement so that we make sure that GERS, the pension fund, isn't depleted, putting both the city and retirees at risk, we want to make sure that we have a strong safeguard around spending on retiree healthcare for the VIBA so that we're not jeopardizing the fund for retiree healthcare. Again, to protect both the city and retirees who rely on the VIBA for the retiree healthcare. So we, we're still in conversations around it. We appreciate people's patience, but we want to make sure that we get this right to protect both the city and retirees. And that's all I've got, Mr. President.
All right, Clerk Doyle, any comments?
No comments, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford, District One.
The greatest discovery of all time is a person that can change his future by merely changing his attitude. That was said by Oprah Winfrey. The change that is going on within the city starts from within the citizens. If we keep holding our leaders to a higher standards, and we can not only change how we feel, but we can change this... If we keep holding our leaders to a higher standards, then we can not only change how we feel, but we can change this community. Um, I wanted to highlight some of the changes that are going on in regards to District One. And the number one thing would be code enforcement. I don't know if you've met Mr. Dwayne Watkins, but he's doing such a superb job of answering the call and being a change agent. His inspections are oftentimes greeted with less resistance because he's honest and he has transparency. I myself have been on the opposite side of getting my home inspected and having to be explained to step by step the things I could do to ensure that I'm being treated fairly as a renter. And also now, in my transition to becoming a homeowner, I appreciate that. I also appreciate all the group homes that have turned in their paperwork, um, so that they can be under the rules and regulations that this so council has set forth. The most important thing that's happening in District, um, One in the coming weeks is the Neighborhood Association meeting that is happening with Ms. Rosalind Northcross that is on Saturday. We also have the CDC's meeting that's coming up on the 24th. But the highlight would also be, um, my District One Coat and Turkey Drive, which is going to be November the 18th, uh, from 1:00 to 3:00 at City Hall. We will be cutting off, uh, the registration as of Friday. So you have Friday to, um, register for the coats. We have coats that are being delivered daily. Uh, lastly, I ask that you please continue to pray for the singers in District One, um, especially Ms. Ragland, um, so that she is feeling better. And last but certainly not least, I ask you to continue to pray for this council and pray for yourselves. Have a great evening.
Thank you. District Three, Councilman Goodman.
Uh, just want to keep it brief. I am looking into the concerns about dumping, uh, at the property on Kennett, as well as continuing to look into the, uh, structure being built on Monticello. Uh, but with that, I will say good night.
Thank you. District Four, Councilman James.
Yes, uh, I want to thank everyone that came out for my amazing, uh, District Four, uh, Community Council Meeting and Holiday Celebration last night at, uh, 5:30. I want to thank our president, Mike McGinnis, for being present with us. Uh, for Mayor Tim Grimal being with us. Uh, Jack McIntyre with Code Enforcement. And our special guest, uh, was State Representative Brenda Carter. So we had a wonderful occasion. I appreciate all of the support, uh, the people that came out. Uh, that will be our final meeting for the year. District Four's next meeting, uh, will be January the 25th, Thursday, January, uh, the 25th, 2024. So with that, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman James, and congratulations on an excellent District Four meeting and holiday celebration. Great turnout. Councilman Parker, District Five.
Thank you, President. First of all, I think.
Microphone.
My voice is big enough. Thank you again. I want to thank, um, Pastor Kathy Desro for always being available to pray for us and give us our invocation. Every time that she's here, and I'm glad that she's feeling much better enough to be in attendance. I want to congratulate my friend, Monique Sharp Judge Sharp, for her appointment. I want to remind everybody about our CDC meeting tomorrow, the 9th of November at 6:00 PM in the Lion's Den, in the Lion's Den, City's Lion's Den downstairs that will start promptly at 6:00 PM. If you forever, for whatever reason can't make it there, if you go to the city's website, there is a Zoom link that you can look on and find out and be able to attend via Zoom. Uh, someone had sent me a letter regarding my sitting at the desk and not getting an update on GERS. I don't know who sent it. They didn't sign it. But there's two reasons I don't necessarily talk too much about GERS. One is I attend the GERS meeting, but I don't attend the CEPR meeting and I don't attend the VIBA meeting, so I don't know all that has been discussed. And I could give you wrong information. But for the, the, for the GERS meeting that I do attend, the mayor has done an excellent job of updating you on what happens at that. And I don't see any reason for me to repeat what, what he has already said since he's the primary person who has attended all the other meetings and know where all the bones are buried. So if, if I have not updated you is because I don't go to all the meetings that are necessary for me to give you a good, clear, concise update. And the mayor does do that, and I know he updates you periodically. There may be weeks with nothing is movement, so there's no reason to give you an update. But when some movement has taken place, he has given you an update. And since he knows from the other meetings what has been discussed, I don't see any need to add to what he has already said. Now, if we have problems with that, please come see me at my office or call me on my phones. Or if you have a problem calling that number, you can reach me at 248-904-7178. And I just wanted, there will be, I know if some people have been concerned about what's going on at Lancaster. There has been multiple meetings with the administration as well as SUD, HUD representatives and the management company at Lancaster regarding some of the issues that are going on. Uh, don't want to really get into that discussion here, but portions of that will probably be discussed at our meeting tomorrow. And there will be a follow-up meeting with all those who have had some concerns to make sure that all the issues that we're trying to get addressed, get addressed appropriately. Uh, and with that, for the president, I say good night.
Thank you very much, Councilman Parker. Thank you for your service to the people of Pontiac. Good evening. I'm Mike McGinnis, District Seven, City Councilperson. First and foremost, our next monthly meeting is Monday, November 13th, 7:00 PM at Prospect Church. I just saw a text message come through from one of our residents of District Seven saying, better have good food for us. If I'm trying to keep up with Councilman James, I better step it up. But I want to invite everybody, please come, uh, so that way we can dive into the various different projects and developments that are underway in District Seven or that have been discussed. We're going to revisit what we received, a presentation on previously about the residential infill overlay district. That's about talking about having smaller or more compact, uh, developments allowed in certain designated concentrated neighborhoods on the east side, which includes, uh, District Seven. So we want to make sure that everyone knows about that continuing, uh, research and review for that matter. Uh, we are looking to see potholes, um, patched as much as the weather allows on the east side. Want to flag specifically Anderson Avenue, uh, between basically Auburn North. And I've heard that Marshall, um, still needs patching from Auburn South. Um, so I'll follow up on those previous requests. Um, but if you know of any potholes in your street in District Seven, please make sure we can get those in now because they're going to be making a transition from hot patch to cold patch. And that's a rough transition. We can still get them patched. It just won't stick as long and it won't be as, as valuable. So we want to make sure we get it while the weather can. And that window might already have closed. So I just want to, you know, be candid with everybody. So, um, for the sake of time, I will leave it at that. But I did hear the feedback from this evening's public comment about Pride and Beautification. We have worked with the city council staff to outline a map. When we were awarding those or even deciding, uh, when the, um, signs would happen this year, we had not decided on a reception. So we're pleased that we brought back the reception now for the first time in a few decades. And we're going to plan next year with that baked into the cake so that way we can communicate that every step of the way. Uh, thank you very much. Oh, Councilman Parker.
If I may, uh, I believe I may have given the wrong date.
Yes.
The date is Thursday, November 9th at 6:00 PM for the District Five, uh, CDC meeting. Please join us again, November 9th, that's Thursday, at 6:00 PM. I look forward to seeing you, each and every one of you there. And thank you, um, uh, Ms., Ms. Miller for letting us know about the building on Bright Bay and University.
Very good. I'll just conclude note that there's very big news that have come out of Lansing to benefit all of us taxpayers in Pontiac and the Pontiac School District. State Representative Carter and our State Representative Moss, um, have been able to get in the supplemental budget. Meaning they did the main big budget and then there was sort of a PS budget that just went through in the last few days. And it eliminated, uh, student, excuse me, school district debt as it relates to the Pontiac School District. Um, and so that's a very big news, $18 million. This is a bit of a PS because I, I don't think the governor has just signed it just yet. But I imagine that we'll have more concrete information that we could share with you at the meeting or the meeting to follow. So that way the community can knows, know what that means. So we can celebrate that along with our partners at the Pontiac School District. Uh, but essentially what that means is that that's no longer on the backs of the administrators of the school district trying to deliver quality education, pay teachers, you know, do what they need to do with the facilities and buildings. But also, it's off the backs of all of us taxpayers. Because that would have, one way or the other, that, you know, the bill would have come due. And so that legacy debt, um, the deficit was eliminated and now the debt had been eliminated. So that's a nice, um, follow-up punch. It was over $18 million for Pontiac. There was very substantial elimination of debt for Ypsilanti's public schools, which is a godsend for the Ypsilanti community. We celebrate and send our regards to them and other school districts, um, that were identified as well. Uh, I believe the Inkster community, um, received much needed relief. Their school district was eliminated by the state of Michigan, but the debt remained there like a, you know, sort of a phantom that was a, a burden and a black cloud over the taxpayers of, of multiple different black and brown communities with legacy debt that in many, many instances, it's not the residents', um, fault or obligation or burden, but they are still saddled with that debt. And so it's a big deal for Pontiac and we'll share more about that so that way the community can know about that big, big news. So that's on top of the tens of millions of dollars that was awesome news in the spring, summer. This is a, a nice exclamation, uh, point to follow the budget process for this year. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
Aye.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. Here we know discussion, roll call on adjournment. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford? Five yes, no no's.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Have a beautiful, safe night, everybody.